Councilmember Dillon, councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone, councilmember Navarette.
Here.
Let the record reflect that councilmembers, um, sorry, Bingle and Klitschke are absent.
Okay then, and I'm, this is Mary Cuny, Spokane County Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. I'm going to call the county commissioners to order and we'll, we'll just go ahead and do, I'm going to let us each go around and introduce ourselves, just to say you're here.
Commissioner Jordan, District One. County Commissioner Josh Kearns, District Three.
Former city councilmember and current county commissioner Al French.
Do I have to say that too? Former city councilmember Amber Waldorf and county commissioner from District Two.
And Mary Cuny, District Four and Chair of the Board. So, I'm going to now turn it over to Betsy.
Hi, Lisa Brown, Mayor of Spokane.
First of all, again, I just want to start off with a welcome to everyone that we're here together to really address our facing challenges. I want to say our presence here today reflects a shared commitment to the health and well-being of our communities, transcending judicial jurisdictional boundaries. Let's cut to the chase. The opioid epidemic is a crisis that requires a unified response. Together, more than ever, we collectively have the power to create meaningful change. As we discuss effective strategies, let us also remember the human stories behind the statistics. Every individual affected by addiction deserves our compassion and support. So, we will here today and learn about insight, shared opportunities, shared challenges, and how we can go forward together. So, with that, I'm going to just get us right into our agenda and I'm going to welcome, did you say anything else Commissioner Cuny?
Um, I would just say that, that this is unprecedented. I mean, I, you know, we don't know in recent history, maybe Commissioner French has the past history, but of, of the county commissioners and the city council really coming together. Everyone Betsy and I have talked to haven't, haven't known about it. And so, I think it is important that, you know, we do come together, we're showing the support that, that we all care about this issue and there's several issues and, you know, that are not on the agenda today that are facing us as a region, that we really do want to work together. And I just want to say I appreciate the friendship of Council President Wilkerson. We've been friends for a long time and as we became electeds, we have been meeting and talking. And it was really through that that we decided to try to have this forum for us to come together and at the invitation of Council President Wilkerson to bring us together. So, I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
And we really are here for the greater good of the community. So, thank you.
All right, with that, let's welcome up Chief Knowles and Chief Hall. Are you guys coming together?
Sheriff.
Sheriff. Chief, Chief Hall, Sheriff Knowles.
Thank you for having me. I'm going to keep this pretty high level and, and let the sheriff close it out with a lot more detail in what's going on regionally. First thing we're doing within SPD is we're looking at this as a multi-pronged approach. I'm a big believer, as is my executive leadership team, that a complex social problem requires complex social resolution. And that means multiple pathways to address the, the issues that we're facing. There's no silver bullet, there's no one golden strategy that's going to fix everything. It's going to take a lot of different strategies and a lot of different collaboration, working together to address this. So, this is, this is heartening to see that everybody's sitting at the table and recognizing the problem. And I'm just using the PowerPoint as sort of talking points, I'm not going to read off of it. I'm just using it to keep me on track because sometimes I go in different directions. Our strategy, like I said, is multi-pronged, there's different pathways we utilize. First and foremost is our crisis outreach response and engagement, our core program, which is focused on the downtown area of Spokane. We implemented this last October, it was supposed to be a pilot. We saw enough impact that we wanted to continue going and, and quite frankly, we weren't getting enough data points in a short amount of time. So, in order to do a comprehensive evaluation as well as reap the benefits that we were already seeing, we decided to continue this through 2025. So, it'll be an over year-long effort and evaluation. And that second bullet point under the, under core is engagement first, enforcement second. We want to work with, collaboratively with our treatment partners, our community partners to try and engage folks into treatment before we default to enforcement. The downtown crime control plan, this enhances core, this is, comes from our new captain downtown, Captain Kurt Reese. And this is a, a plan that increases visibility of officers for the perception of safety. If you've been downtown lately or if you plan on going downtown, you're going to see more officers on foot, more officers on bicycles. There's some other deployment strategies we're using, they're going out earlier in the morning to engage folks as opposed to later in the morning before business is open and, and the, the business day begins downtown. The high-risk, high-consumer identification, this is something we're working with consistent care in identifying folks who are not only high consumers of the criminal justice system, but also of behavioral health, substance use, medical, all of the different social systems. We want to identify the folks who, the, the most high acuity folks that are out there and who need the most help, but are also the highest consumers of all of these different systems and then provide all of the different services that we can. This kind of stems from an old paper called Million Dollar Murray. I can certainly provide it to the group if you're interested, it's, it's everybody's public policy graduate student's best paper ever and they'll talk about it. But it essentially is the same concept, that being that it's cheaper to address these folks on the front end than to continually treat them as they cycle through the system over and over and over. Close and continued partnership with service providers. This is, is very acute downtown, but we're seeing it throughout the city where folks are, my folks are collaboratively working with treatment providers, both in the behavioral health side and the substance use side, to deflect or divert at the street level individuals that they constantly have contact with. And if they catch them in that very narrow window, when they want to engage in treatment, the officers are, are taking them or having the service providers come to them to take these folks into treatment as opposed to an enforcement strategy. And the last thing we'll talk about is what we call SPD Tac Ops, it's Tactical Operations Unit. This is the enforcement arm of our investigative bureau who focuses on, on the enforcement side of narcotics trafficking. And this is something new, we've just started this, it's called the Leave Behind Program. It's sponsored by the state and it's, it's new to us, it's not new to EMS and fire. And this is where the state provides naloxone or Narcan nasal spray to first responders who, when they're engaging folks, high-risk folks, and whether those folks are arrested or not, the officers are allowed to leave behind Narcan, brief five-minute sort of speech on how to use it, when to use it, and then they leave the Narcan behind with the folks, our high-risk folks. It's called the Leave Behind Program, we've just started and we're expecting our first shipment of Narcan any day. So, the core initiative, like I said, it's, it's started as a pilot. As we started tracking the data coming out of the pilot, we, we immediately recognized that the vast majority of our calls for service, the vast majority of all of the issues we see with narcotics and particularly opioids happened within the downtown district. And, and we immediately recognized the law of crime concentration. Small number of offenders are responsible for a large number of, of the crime that's out there. The other part of the core initiative that, that wasn't well-publicized and that was intentional is the officers were looking for not just what we call subsistence dealers, those street-level dealers who are, who are dealing in one to 10 pills, we're looking for the folks who are bringing the narcotics into the downtown area and following up on, on those. So, the traffickers, the mid-level traffickers who are, who are working throughout Spokane, but bringing the narcotics down into the downtown area. This is the downtown crime control plan that we just implemented, it's about visibility engagement. We're sort of re-initiating our relationship with community court and all of our stakeholders downtown, including the Downtown Partnership, GSI, some youth organizations, probation, we just met with, with State Parole. Like I said, it's going to take a lot of relationships and a lot of different pathways in order to effectively mitigate the issues that we're seeing right now. And collaboration with, with, as I said, all of our service providers downtown who are opening up their doors to us and saying, yes, if you have somebody who wants treatment, bring them to them and we'll, we'll figure out where they go. And, and that, that runs the gamut from street health, consistent care, CHAZ, CAT, all of our providers down there have done this. This is all designed to disrupt the, the market, the drug market ecosystem and there, it is an ecosystem, it, it's, it's almost like a living, breathing social system. And if you spend enough time down there, you can see how it ebbs and flows. We want to disrupt that, we want to disrupt the, the, the use of the narcotics, we want to disrupt the, the folks who are bringing the narcotics down, we want to disrupt the open-air drug markets that are occurring. This goes to basically what is a high-utilizer list and this is what I already talked about. We're looking at the high-acuity population, the folks who are the biggest consumers of all of our social systems, meaning that they are the ones most in need and are cycling in and out, in and out, in and out. We want to develop this with the partnership of consistent care so, so that we can wrap these folks into the services they need as opposed to just allowing them to cycle in and out, in and out, in and out. And, and these, quite frankly, my officers downtown know many of these folks on a first-name basis and have been dealing with them for a decade or more. Once again, these are some of the, not all, some of the treatment providers that we, we are working with and partnering with. The enforcement arm, we call them Tac Ops, they, they focus, like I said, on mid and high-level narcotics trafficking. We intentionally don't advertise or publicize a lot of the things they do, I, I think for obvious reasons, but I will, I will, I wanted to highlight one, and this is a very recent case, and some of you might have heard of the Ridpath Apartments downtown, this came out of the Ridpath Apartments and it involved a, a pretty extensive investigation, started with the core initiative. And the end result was, you can see here, $110,000 worth of cash was seized, a kilogram of methamphetamine, 453 grams of cocaine, 150 grams of powder fentanyl, which by the way, and I think the sheriff's is going to touch on this, we are seeing a switch now from pill-form fentanyl and we're seeing more powder fentanyl, and I'll let the sheriff get more into that. 10,000 fentanyl pills. This, this investigation is going to result in multiple, multiple felony charges. And what I've already talked about is the street-level dealers are generally subsistence dealers, they're dealing just to supply their own habit. We, we do, we do arrest those folks, we do try and engage those folks into treatment, but our bigger focus with this group, with SPD Tac Ops, are the mid-level and the high-level traffickers. We know from the DEA, FBI, all of our federal partners, that the vast majority of narcotics entering Spokane come from the I-19, I-10, I-5, I-90 quarter. It's just a big freeway straight up through California into the tri-cities area and we know that most of the narcotics that we see in Spokane come straight through the tri-cities area into Spokane. So, that's their, their, their focus is interrupting that particular freeway of narcotics that end up in Spokane. It requires, once again, a, a lot of collaboration with our federal partners, with our state partners, with our county partners, and, and a, a high level of coordination. One of the things I did want to mention that I think they're doing the hiring process on now is the city-sponsored and is funding a special U.S. Attorney General specific for this effort of, of these types of cases that are interstate and, and, and quite frankly, international to, so that we can field these cases and then present them to this special Like I said, high level, I wanted to blast right through it and I'll, I'll let the sheriff go and then if there are any questions, we can entertain questions.
And really, I want this to be interactive, so Sheriff, if you want us to ask questions while you're speaking, let us know or wait till the end because I don't want y'all talking at me for hour and a half. I'd like to hear what's really on our minds and put it out there. And so, Chief, I have one quick question, I'm going to have the mayor speak to the Attorney General. Where is the youth at in this whole process? Are they just lumped with the adult population or are we doing something different to tackle that problem?
We are doing something different to tackle that problem and that's, that's education. But quite frankly, when you look at the overdose, and I'm not sure if the sheriff's going to get into these stats or not, when you're looking at the overdose, the fatal overdose stats, these are generally people from the age of 30 up to 60. The, these are adults who have been using for quite some time that are experiencing the fatal overdoses, it's a much smaller number at the youth, but the prevention piece is our long-term goal, looking out at the horizon, we want to make sure that our youth now are not in that group of 30 and 40-year-olds who are, who are overdosing.
You want to speak to the Attorney General piece that he mentioned?
I'll just add, yeah, the Special Assistant U.S. Attorney that we proposed and the council funded, got caught up a little bit at the beginning of the year in a delay with federal issues, but we understand it's back on track and that it's in the background check process and then that person will be on board in the Attorney General's office focused specifically on disrupting drug supply in Spokane.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And I believe this, we can make the slide decks available to you all so you're not frantically trying to write down stats, so they'll, those will come out later. Welcome Sheriff.
Thank you for having me. And just upfront, what is going to be up here on the screen is pretty busy, every single one of you has a hard copy of what is coming up on the screen in front of you, plus a few additional single-pagers. These one-page reports were things that I printed out this morning for the most up-to-date data and we'll go into kind of what they mean here pretty quickly. To answer your question, Councilwoman Wilkerson, we do not capture a lot of data on youth and one of the first things we're going to talk about is, is we're, we're going to try to figure out how we get better data surrounding youth and around youth overdose and youth drug use. That's one of our 2025 goals through this initiative that we've undertaken recently. So, we do have a, a blind spot where our youth are concerned and we're trying to get some better visibility into it. So, to start with, the first part of this presentation is a report that was created by one of our investigative analysts that is currently assigned to the Raven Task Force. The Raven Task Force, as you can see from the bottom of the page, is a task force made up of officers and, and law enforcement from the sheriff's office, Spokane Police Department, Spokane Valley, HSI, Department of Corrections in Washington State, DEA and the FBI. The data is comprised of overdose death data we've received from the Spokane County Medical Examiner's Office, drug seizures from the Spokane County Sheriff's Office and the Raven Task Force, overdose calls for service data that comes from SREC, which includes all of city, all of county, both fire and law enforcement, naloxone calls for service data, which is the same, and then there's some overdose comparisons and OD death comparisons, all of that is in these packets. I do want to say that the analyst who compiled all this is funded through the opioid money that was provided to us from the Board of County Commissioners, that this analysis is done to provide information to the Board of County Commissioners, to inform them on kind of what the drug trends are in Spokane County so they can make decisions about how to go forward and, and spend funds. The investigator is also a specially commissioned investigator and assists the task force operators with identifying mid-to-upper-level drug trafficking organizations and helps us approach denying, disrupting and dismantling those DTOs. Next slide, I got the clicker, do I get to do that? All right, which button do I press to go forward? Down arrow. Down arrow, makes sense. Okay, what I want to call attention to here is the bottom line upfront. First responders dispatched to drug-related calls have quadrupled in the last three years. Calls related to deploying naloxone have increased five-fold during the same time period from 2022 to 2024. Fentanyl-related deaths have almost doubled. Fentanyl, methamphetamine and cocaine-related overdose deaths have been trending up since mid-2024 and continue to angle upward moving into 2025. Okay, those are pretty astounding statistics, I'm sure you're all aware of it, but again, the actual hard data is in those packets. Next, drug fatality report, and, and I won't spend too much time on this because I believe we have Dr. Singh here to talk in, with far more intelligence and far more accuracy than I will, but just know this data is in there and it comes from the Spokane Medical Examiner's Office. Drug seizure comparison report, this is just what the Spokane County Sheriff's Office and the Raven Task Force sees this year, it does not include data from the Spokane Police Department and DEA. I will have more information about county-wide seizures later in the, in the presentation. As you can see, fentanyl pills and Oxycontin, each 73,000, 272 grams of fentanyl powder, methamphetamine, heroin, cocaine, you can see all of that. What I will say is one of the challenges with collecting this data is our patrol people and because it can be complicated and tricky to handle fentanyl and there's kind of a reluctance to really deal with it a whole lot as far as physically handling it, we do not very often at the patrol level end up counting the number of pills and things that we're seizing. So, there, there is some inconsistencies in this data and it certainly doesn't capture everything. This is just the number of pills that we seized and actually counted. So, okay, overdose calls for service, you can see the type of calls there on the left, you can see far and above the calls for service for fire and police that are associated with overdose, our medics' calls. And you will see later on, the trend we are seeing is a significant portion of our overdose calls make up the significant portion of medic calls for both fire and police. That shouldn't surprise anybody, it's at least more than a third. What I draw from this is this opioid epidemic, this, oh, this overdose epidemic is costing our emergency services system a tremendous amount of money. Think what we could do if we could reduce our call load for our firefighters and our police officers fully by a third. I think it's a, it's a, an important statistic to pay attention to in ways we can significantly impact our communities. You will see we have, you know, suicide calls. I want to point out the third one down, it says WellMed. That's not necessarily intuitive what it is, but since this fentanyl epidemic has occurred, we have had an explosion of what's called a WellMed call where it is generally somebody who is found to be unconscious behind the wheel of a vehicle or behind some kind of a motorized vehicle where fire has quit responding to them because they pose so much danger and it's incumbent upon the police to show up, try to wake the person up and try to avoid them, you know, taking off in a vehicle and endangering the public, which is, tends to be what they do. Those used to be a pretty rare call and as I will show you later with our most recent data, it is happening 10, 15 times a day countywide, every single day. And it proposes, it, it poses significant safety risk to this community. Okay, naloxone calls for service, this is every call for service county and citywide where the word naloxone shows up is whether we administered it or whether it was requested. You can see, again, medics' calls are the call type that is most usually referred to naloxone, WellMed is number two at 103. It is taking up a significant amount of our resources. Okay, naloxone and overdose compared to overdose. Okay, naloxone and overdose compared to overdose deaths, you see that green line on the bottom is the overdose deaths. You can see there is a strong correlation between naloxone calls for service, overdose calls for service. Um, thankfully, um, as, as those calls for services go up and down, our deaths stay, stay pretty consistent. Now, I don't mean that as good news. It just doesn't show that there's a strong correlation between the number of calls and the number of people who actually, uh, pass away as a result of an overdose. Great, um, historical calls for service to OD deaths, you can see they're correlated and they are trending up, unfortunately. And you see that bottom graph shows the difference between fentanyl deaths, all other drug deaths and naloxone calls for service. Um, so you can see those numbers stay pretty stable, um, but they are far too high. Okay, here's the challenges and the takeaways from, from this particular study of the information we have so far. OD deaths stayed fairly flat during twenty twenty-four. Although, um, OD deaths have increased from two hundred and thirty-three to three hundred and forty-nine in twenty twenty-four, most fentanyl deaths involved meth, cocaine or all three, fentanyl, meth or all three. Um, both major indicators of drug abuse increased in both calls of service and overdose deaths. Um, these are the goals for the Raven Task Force and for this particular analyst. Again, partnering with Spokane Alliance for Fentanyl Education, as Chief Hall pointed out, educating, uh, the public about how dangerous fentanyl is, particularly our youth, is critically important. We are not getting enough education about fentanyl into our schools. Um, recommending improvements on quantifying drug seizures, I talked about that before. Deputies aren't necessarily always counting and weighing the drugs. It does get weighed going into the property facility, but that doesn't do much as far as giving us a pill count. Um, recommending improvements to naloxone reporting, um, again, there are challenges. It doesn't, the system doesn't always pick up every time naloxone is administered. Um, we have better technology right now using our Peregrine software than we have ever had before, but it still has gaps. Again, working more with HIDA to improving the DEA overdose map integration. Um, I will say our Medical Examiner's Office here in Spokane is one of the few medical examiner's offices statewide that is, uh, integrating with OD map. They've done a great job and HIDA really appreciates the partnership there. This I pulled and put into the slide deck a couple of days ago. Um, if you look at the overdose metrics sheet, this is the most current, again, this was as of about eight-thirty this morning. This shows all of the overdose calls related to fentanyl in Spokane County. This is Spokane City, Spokane County, fire and police dispatch data. You can see that so far this year, we have had a hundred and thirty-seven fentanyl-related overdose calls for service, which is forty-eight point nine-one percent higher than this time last year. We're not trending in the right direction. Um, you can also see the graphs breaks out, um, the number of Shrek incidents by month, and it also does by day of week and time of day. Um, you can go through and look at those at your, at your leisure. The second map that I brought up was those WellMed calls. Um, I do not have a slide for that up here, but again, some of you have those sitting in front of you. Um, and this is for, um, year-to-date, seven hundred and seventy-two total CAD incidences, which is almost up five percent from twenty twenty-four. And again, it breaks out which districts, I believe this might be just, uh, SCSO for the WellMed calls. Okay, next report I wanna get into, this was a report prepared for me from Northwest HIDA. And for those of you who are not aware, Northwest HIDA is the High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. There are nine HIDA initiatives in the state of Washington. Spokane County has two separate HIDA initiatives, uh, which is the DEA Task Force and then also the Raven Task Force here in Spokane. Um, so the information gleaned is from those two sources. And, uh, again, High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, it is a nationally-funded, uh, program out of the ONDCP, out of the White House. And, uh, we'll give you some statistics here. These are the OZA overdose statistics, again, they receive them from the Medical Examiner's Office. This is a little bit delayed information compared to what I gave you earlier. Um, you know, obviously they're a quarter behind and they report quarterly. Okay, drug prices in Spokane, a lot of times drug prices, um, will indicate the prevalence of a certain substance on the streets, availability. Um, this shows some trends over time and again, this is for twenty twenty-four. The average price per gram for cocaine is thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Fentanyl powder, which we have seen an increase of. Quarters one and two in twenty twenty-four, the HIDA initiatives in Spokane County seized zero grams of powdered fentanyl. Quarters three, quarters four, over fifty percent of our fentanyl seizures were fentanyl powder. As Chief Hall alluded, we're starting to see a little bit more of it. You will also see the availability of it showing up and the gram price dropping as more of it showed up onto our streets. Um, I would say it's good news that the price per pill for fentanyl on the street that we're seizing is going up, um, but it is still incredibly inexpensive at two dollars a pill on average in Spokane County, uh, to purchase a pill of fentanyl. Um, seizures, this is what we did for the HIDA initiatives in twenty twenty-four. You can see the spikes over time that are going. Um, again, fentanyl tablets, over two hundred thousand fentanyl tablets in twenty twenty-four, fentanyl powder, five point three-nine kilograms. And the, the purity of that fentanyl ranges around eighty percent, you'll see, uh, later in this slide. So, um, the fentanyl powder can be far more dangerous than fentanyl pills. Um, it also indicates that either the preference of using the, the powdered form of fentanyl is increasing or the availability of pill presses to press them into pills has also shown up locally. I will say in twenty twenty-three, um, at the time, the Spokane Valley Police Department seized the only commercial pill press that had ever been seized in the United States. Um, I believe another pill press was seized just last month, uh, over in the King County area as well. So the availability of commercial pill presses to turn powdered fentanyl into pill form, um, is here. Um, again, you can see down there at the bottom right, the powder seizures increased from zero percent to sixty-two percent of fentanyl seizures, um, with a corresponding drop in price. Uh, the top left, this is something that I think we need to pay attention to and it goes, it, it just emphasizes how important enforcement of mid to upper-level drug trafficking is in this area. Um, they track whenever possible and when the information is available, any drugs that were seized outside of the state of Washington, outside of the area of responsibility for Northwest HIDA. And they said that the drug originated inside the state of Washington. They quantify and list the number of, uh, of seizures that came from a specific county. Unfortunately, Spokane County is the number one county listed as the source origination county for seizures outside the state of Washington at thirty-five point eight-nine percent. And you can see in the bottom, all traffic stops identifying Spokane County as the point of origin occurred in Montana, Idaho, Wyoming and South Dakota. Spokane, ten years ago, was not the distribution point for controlled substances east of Spokane. And we are now. Um, and there's probably a bunch of different reasons for it. Um, scarcity of resources, the lack of our police officers that we have the ability to dedicate to, to mid to upper-level drug trafficking certainly has an influence on that. Um, we all know, you know, what some of our, um, you know, the, the Blake decision really did complicate the enforcement of our narcotics laws for a bunch of different reasons that I won't, uh, go into right now. And it's not just one thing, as Chief Hall put, uh, stated very eloquently earlier. Um, it's not just one thing causing the problem and it's not gonna be just one thing solving it. But we do need to focus more on mid to upper-level trafficking and that top-left slide is the evidence of it. We should not be the distribution hub to all of these states east of us. Um, again, there's some other target events and deconflictions. What I will say is, a target is the actual suspect, the number of suspects, and then the operations are the number of operations that we did during a certain time period. So you can see, a lot of our targets require multiple operations to go ahead and bring them to justice. That's really just shows, um, you know, multiple defendant, multiple operations to get defendants into custody. Um, operation types, that's how we go about, um, you know, enforcing the narcotics laws and the types of operations we use to get the cases put together. Um, drug operations by drug type, you can obviously see that fentanyl is, um, one of the biggest focus areas right now. Methamphetamine is a close second and again, we are seeing cocaine, um, and other things. Uh, cocaine is increasing, but is still not a predominant, uh, controlled substance being brought in. Some other agencies that are reporting into HIDA, um, Spokane Sector Border Patrol seizing mostly methamphetamine and, uh, and cannabis. Uh, fentanyl is also a close third. You can also see from the United States Postal Inspect, Inspection Service, most of their seizures of controlled substances are outbound to places outside of the state of Washington. Um, I'm guessing a significant part of that is cannabis being exported out of the state of Washington. Primary illicit substances tested at the federal and state crime labs, you can see methamphetamine, fentanyl are the most. Um, one thing of note, xylazine, we have seen some xylazine in Spokane County, um, although it is not significantly present as of yet. Um, and then again, the number of fentanyl, um, analyzed in both DEA and the, in the state of Washington labs. Okay, that's what I have for data, I know I threw a lot at you. It is in front of you if you have any questions. Um, do you guys have any questions for me specifically, Mr. Kathcart?
Yeah, just curious, you mentioned that we should focus more on mid to upper-level traffickers. What, what would be the obstacles that we're facing right now to doing that and what could possibly change to make that a little bit easier?
I can speak specifically about me, staffing, one hundred percent, it's staffing. Um, putting together those multi-jurisdictional operations, it's very manpower-intensive. Um, we do have the funding through a couple of different mechanisms. Uh, like I said, the HIDA initiatives provide a significant amount of funding to us to go out and actually physically buy the drugs and things like that, right? They're, they're not free and it takes money to do that. Um, HIDA funds us very well for that. The state does have some current funding for us that we use. But it is being able to, to get detectives and officers and deputies, uh, in the room together and being able to take a year or two to develop these big, uh, multi-defendant cases that we've just struggled to do. That's one of our biggest challenges. I know, um, the city has been a part of the Raven Task Force for a long time, but obviously losing, I think, three of the, the, the bodies who left for the early retirement were out of the Raven Task Force and I know it's really hard to, to staff that. So right now Raven's, uh, significantly understaffed, so.
Yeah, thank you for this very sobering, uh, data. Um, I guess my question maybe to kind of piggyback off that is the sort of drug-related operation types, when you look at by-walk, search warrant, surveillance by bust, are those ratios typical of other jurisdictions? Is there one that, you know, you'd like to see us look more into, um, to kind of boost up? Or how does that sort of correlate with other, uh, law enforcement agencies?
You know, I don't know that I could answer how those particular ratios work compared to other jurisdictions. I know most of the other multi-jurisdictional task forces across the state use the same techniques. Um, you know, to walk you through how, uh, a multi-level investigation might start, it might start with, um, a local vice cop or a local street-level narcotics enforcement person just doing a quick by-walk of, you know, forty dollars worth of a controlled substance. And as you go through putting those cases together, they say, well, listen, you know, this is who I'm buying from or you might identify them. So, um, it kind of is case-dependent, to be honest with you. But all of those are techniques that we have been using to identify and, and enforce the laws for decades. Commissioner Kearns?
Uh, Sheriff, on, on your graph that you had on the level of seizures for the, the different, for, for the different drugs, for fentanyl, methamphetamine, cocaine and other, what do you attribute the, the huge swings in what's, what's being seized? I mean, when you look at quarter one, fentanyl is at the top. When you move to quarter three, I mean, it's, it's barely above cocaine, you know, in the third, I mean, those are some massive swings quarter by quarter. What, what do you attribute those?
A lot of it depends on the cases that actually come to resolution and when it's reported, right? So, so they may be having, these, these cases have probably been going on for six months, nine months, some of them a year, maybe two. And so, as we're working these DTOs, drug trafficking organizations, they may be selling one particular type of controlled substance. They might be, uh, selling multiple. And so if, if we happen to be working for six months, somebody who's just solely selling methamphetamine, but yet we're working two or three other cases where they're selling fentanyl and all of them come to resolution at the same time, it's gonna look like the methamphetamine seizures are down where the fentanyl are up and it just happened to be those were the, the substance du jour that that particular drug trafficking organization was selling at the time we actually reported, so. Yeah.
I just wanna ask, I'll get to Council, uh, Commissioner Walter. We talk about education. Have we as a region talked about a PSA around this? Between the city, the county and the health district around drug education? Councilman Kathcart and I have talked about drug education for years and haven't got a lot of movement, but what would that look like collaboratively?
So we, we are all partners with the, the Spokane, uh, Alliance for Fentanyl Education. That's a group that is doing a lot as far as educating people as to dangers of fentanyl. Um, I will tell you, um, some other HIDA initiatives, so other counties in the state, and I am drawing a blank on the acronym, I know Commissioner Kearns, you brought this program up, uh, to me, um, as well as now the HIDA Board is very aware of it. Um, there is a program being, uh, produced, it not being produced, delivered inside schools in a couple of our HIDA initiatives um, that teach kids about resilience, anti-bullying. And it's, it's not the Dare of Old, in fact, it's not even named Dare, but it, it talks to kids about how to be resilient and resistant to the types of peer pressure that lead to drug use and things like that. Um, it's been very, very successful. And so I have a couple of my, uh, under sheriffs looking into that program as whereas what is now the new Dare program, um, which isn't about drug resistance education. It is more about, you know, how to deal with peers, strengthening of character, anti-bullying, those kinds of things. My personal belief is, you know, if we wanna start talking about upstream, we need to look at funding and implementing those types of programs to prevent kids from be, from being susceptible to use in the first place. Um, I think everybody here can agree that we have to do whatever we can do to stop the next generation of people becoming addicted to substances. Um, we've gotta get rid of this idea that we can take a pill to relieve whatever anxiety we have because it leads to this. Commissioner Cuny?
Yeah, that was Yakima County was the.
Is one of the HIDA initiatives, yes. Do you remember the acronym?
I don't, uh, remember the name of the program, but, but I mean, the commissioners there were super excited about it. Um, the problem was for us is we were looking at putting OPA dollars towards that, but then the state came and want, wanted to do their own program throughout the state. So that's why we chose not to at that point in time. But I don't know what the state is doing in the schools at this point, um, for education. Um, so, so it's something for us, I think, to ask our superintendents and then talk to our state legislators because it was funded through the state, uh, to come down to the schools through OSPI. So, um, but I do know Yakima, you know, they were kind of leading Yakima County on, on educating and it was a really great program. And I know, um, Justin, you know, Johnson with our Community Services Department looked into us, for us. And again, we, we backed off on it because of the funding that was gonna be coming to the state and, and then using those funds in other purposes.
Yes, and we, we received an update, uh, the HIDA Board received an update, uh, about three weeks ago and the data that was coming out of those programs was very, very encouraging. Um, and I will say, my intent is, once we find out what the costs are and what the curriculum is, I don't have a problem going out to the private sector and saying, how do we fund this in our schools? Um, I think there is a tremendous amount of interest, um, by our business communities to say, how do we get on top of this? So, I apologize for taking a lot of time.
I'm gonna, I was just following up on that, but I have another question for you, I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry, Amber, thank you. Um, so the, one of the questions I have, um, and Chief Hall talked about this as well, is if we're kind of this magnet for distribution east of us, how is it getting to us? And I know you went down to the border and, uh, down in California, um, last year and took a look at that. Um, and, and so, and in regards to that too, with the border crossings, we're seeing, um, I know now a decrease, having, um, you know, recently been down in Texas, they are talking about that they're closing detention centers because the border crossings are slowing. Um, so what are we seeing there and how is it really getting into our community? Because I don't think it's not originating here.
Correct, we are not manufacturing controlled substances here in Spokane County at all. Um, ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of the substances that make their way into Spokane County come from the southern border, um, generally coming through, um, I five up through Yakima and then up to Spokane. Um, that's been an established route for decades and decades and decades and hasn't significantly shifted. We do get some coming through the I five corridor from Seattle. shifted. We do get some coming through the I-5 corridor from Seattle over. But again, almost 38% of all the drugs seized outside of the state of Washington came from Spokane County at some point. Now granted, they all came from somewhere else before they got here. I will say, talking to Jonathan Weiner, who is the HIDA Director, there are almost no documented instances of controlled substances coming down from Canada. Certainly, there are super labs that are located up in Canada, but generally speaking, those are not coming south across the border. Almost everything is coming north from Mexico. And he wanted to point out that those super labs in Canada, they are still operated by the cartels such as the Sinaloa Cartel and things like that. They are not, you know, Canadian citizens doing it. It is cartel-run in Canada as well.
Well, I was just going to follow up on the Assistant U.S. Attorney. So the goal behind that position is that there be a dedicated attorney working to take and bring these mid-to-high level drug traffickers to federal court? Or is that also our own felony courts at the county? How does that work? And what's the, what's the relationship between taking folks to court just through our county court system versus the federal court? And how is that planning to be addressed?
Our Raven Task Force, and I know this is true with the Spokane Police Department, well, it's case-dependent. You know, the United States Attorney's Office does not take every distribution case federally. They pick and choose, and a lot of it depends on what evidence you have, what don't you have. Is it a multi-defendant case? They're extremely interested in those. So our Raven Task Force, they have been federally deputized in the past, and they were able to direct file with the U.S. Attorney's Office. There are times where we use DEA agents where they'll adopt the case from us now and go to the U.S. Attorney's Office. But if it's a case that actually meets the standard, and it doesn't even matter if it's just a patrol officer who stops and seizes, you know, a bunch of pills, if the United States Attorney's Office sees that it's something that is worthy of federal prosecution, it doesn't matter where the case originated, they will take it. And so it, just like everyone else, it's a resource issue. So the more U.S. Attorneys, special U.S. Attorneys they have to take those cases, the better off we are. They can take more than they might otherwise be able to.
So it might be good to circle back, once that person is in that position and trained up, to figure out what are the other resources from the law enforcement side, the investigative, the investigative side, to be able to have the evidence and bring the evidence to a point where it could be brought to a court. So it sounds like there's some potential gaps in terms of the capacity that we have to bring some of those cases against those mid-to-level, mid-to-upper level traffickers.
Well, I will say that the relationship between local law enforcement and the U.S. Attorney's Office exists, and it's very strong. I know that they're on first-name basis with the people in the Raven Task Force, and I'm sure they are with the people at the Spokane Police Department's Tac Ops. I know that they know each other, they have relationships. Again, it just, it depends on a case-by-case basis whether, I mean, the U.S. Attorney's Office takes cases they can win. That's all there is to it. And so our job is to make sure we have it put together the best way possible.
That's, I was just kind of following up on Councilmember Cathcart's question, like, what are those resources that could help, you know, continue to address this part, this part of the opioid problems that we have?
Again, it's staffing and availability.
I was just going to go back to the education issue that both of you brought forward. I think we should circle back to this after the legislative session. I know that there are some pieces in different proposed budgets that relate directly to this. And so it would be good for us to see how that ends up and what percentage of those funds would make their way to us anyway, and then see how we could coordinate with whatever might be happening at the state level. I also know, I just met yesterday with an organization that's a culturally specific prevention and education program for native youth that's expanding to Spokane from the west side in the schools. It's called Rise Above. And so again, I think getting a handle on what those programs are and what their current plans are, and how we could, you know, maybe do a gap analysis and add to it and encourage our private sector to be with us on that would be a really positive thing. So just wanted to second what the two of you brought up there.
So Sheriff, the other thing that is concerning to me is if we're seeing a switch from pills to powder, is that then become more lethal if people are using a powder?
We'll have to see how that trend continues. Obviously, if purity numbers keep increasing and we keep seeing more fentanyl powder, sure, that means that, you know, we could end up with more potent doses on the street, which could lead to more fatalities. What thing hasn't changed is the predominant way of ingesting fentanyl right now is smoking. And so obviously powdered fentanyl is easier to smoke than pill form. But what we don't know, and what I can't tease out from this data, is, is the powder form eventually being turned into pills or not? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. And again, the fact that we are finding pill presses inside the state of Washington now indicates that might be the case. But we have to get more data and a few more seizures before I'm willing to say, yeah, this is what the end result will be.
Okay. And then I guess the question are just to the general public that is out trying to be a good citizen and picking up trash. If they see a bag of powder, they don't want to be touching it.
Correct. And understand that fentanyl powder can be any color, fentanyl pills. And I think this is the big education piece for kids and for the public who are not intentionally out seeking fentanyl. Fentanyl can be made to look like any pill. It can be made and pressed into any form, any color, any shape. So it's best, if you don't know what you're handling and you didn't receive it from a pharmacist, assume that it's fentanyl, period, because it likely is.
All right. Well, thank you, Sheriff. So great. I think there's opportunities, especially around education, for us to work with a lot of people. So I can certainly follow up on that there. Hope I can get here from our school this year.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks for getting here from Dr. Stain.
Welcome. Most of us had never met you before.
That's right. I haven't met all that many people. I'm not out and about that much. But thank you for inviting me to participate in this conversation. I'm being a thing, I'm the chief medical examiner for Spokane County. I'm going to talk a little bit about trends that we've been seeing in the fatal overdose group. Obviously, I only have information related to fatal overdoses, but I think that information can be extrapolated to the population of living people that is, that are using drugs. And that may help us identify or help someone identify points at which someone can intervene in the process and potentially refer people to treatment. So as everyone knows, and we've heard mentioned a couple of times already this morning, we have seen a sharp increase in overdose deaths in Spokane County. This is data from 2018 to the last year that we have completed data, 2024. And you can see that there's been more than 300% increase from 2018 till now. In 2024, we had 352 deaths that were related, either where drugs were the main cause of death or they contributed to death. That amounts to about 5% of all of the deaths in Spokane County. So that's a staggering cost, right? A human cost of people who are dying here of overdoses. To kind of put that in sort of the spectrum of deaths that we see at the medical examiner's office, that's about five times as many people as die from motor vehicle fatalities, and about four times as many people die from gunshot wound deaths. And that's all commerce, not just accidental shootings or homicidal shootings, but these are all overdoses versus all motor vehicle related deaths, all overdoses versus all gunshot wound deaths. So again, a lot of people dying. The trend that we see has continued upward as you see, this is contrary to the national trends. Those of you that follow public health bulletins have been seeing that nationally overdose deaths have been leveling off and then declining from around late 2023 and into 2024. Unfortunately, now in 2025, there has been an upward tick in a lot of jurisdictions. I just have, for an example, the King County data. So I don't know if you can see the little thing here, but in the same timeframe as the national decline, King County was also seeing a downward trend. In January and February of this year, they have seen an upward tick as well. So we are kind of on that. We are still seeing an upward trend. This is preliminary data from my office, but we are seeing, this is year over year, January and February of this year, you can see that we're still up over last year for both of those months, unfortunately. So what, as we've heard and as everyone is aware, that that increase is driven in large part by overdoses that involve fentanyl. In Spokane County, about 80% or a little bit over 80% of the cases in 2024 did involve fentanyl. Fentanyl, this is in keeping with state trends and national trends, the little graph off to the left side here, just basically goes over what are described as the waves of the opioid epidemic. So initially, we had sort of ongoing levels of heroin use and prescription opioid use, and then a rise in opioid, prescription opioid use, a little blip in the heroin use, and then this just sharp upswing in fentanyl deaths. Again, just as we are seeing here. Fentanyl does get all of the attention, but I always want to mention that fentanyl is not the only problem we're seeing. As we heard this morning, methamphetamine has been always high and has risen in sort of concordance with the fentanyl deaths. A lot of these we're seeing are mixed drug overdoses, so fentanyl and methamphetamine, fentanyl and increasingly cocaine. This lighter line at the bottom here is a, I think, significant upswing in cocaine-related deaths. We, this sort of cocaine deaths go kind of up and down over time, but this increase is, I think, something to take note of. And this again is mirroring national trends. We have this blue line on the left-hand side is fentanyl alone, and then the red line is fentanyl mixed with a stimulant, so either methamphetamine or cocaine. Again, that's what we're, it's relatively rare for us to see just a fentanyl overdose or just a methamphetamine overdose. Much more commonly, it is a mixed drug overdose. The other problem, though, is that we don't even really know the entirety of the problem because the illicitly manufactured drugs don't have any quality control. We don't have a way of knowing what's in them. When you buy a pharmaceutical product, you know that there have been strict quality control measures. We know exactly the dose of the drug and so on. These illicitly manufactured products, we don't know, even in a single pill, where the methamphetamine is. Is it distributed throughout the pill? Is it clumped in one area? Is there no fentanyl in the pill? So there are substances that might be added that are deliberately to augment the effect of the advertised drug or to dilute the effect, to facilitate the administration of the drug, so to keep it as a pill rather than disintegrating into powder. Sometimes because of the way the drugs are illicitly manufactured, they may just be simply contaminated by something, contaminated by another drug that's made in the same area, contaminated by a microbe or a fungus or a heavy metal that just happens to be in the environment. So we don't have a way of testing for those things, but they may also be playing a role in people's overdose deaths. I want to also mention, so we have the direct cost of people overdosing is staggering, as we saw. But people with ongoing use of drugs also develop a lot of chronic diseases, and that takes its toll on a population too, right? So in productivity, in use of medical services and so on. So what we are seeing in my office is even very young people who have a history of substance use, who have this pretty significant chronic medical issues. So they have damage to their heart muscle or their valves from using drugs. They have some stimulant drugs, like methamphetamine and cocaine accelerate the development of coronary artery disease, the primary way that people are using drugs. Now, there's been a switch from injection use to inhaling or snorting the drugs, and that damages people's lungs. Breaking down the drugs and getting them out of the body can damage the liver and the kidneys. So we have people who are, again, young, but have pretty significant, sometimes lethal, natural disease. That natural disease also makes them more susceptible to doses of illicit drugs and makes them more likely to die from those. The upside, I guess, to that is that if these people are engaged in the healthcare system, it does offer an opportunity potentially to intervene there and get people into treatment. As far as who is using, I want to just really highlight here that this is all strata of our community, all levels of our community. So this is the age distribution from 2024 on the left-hand side. You see that it runs the gamut from toddler to, I don't want to say elderly, but 77 is advanced adult, advanced adult age. So the bulk of them are, yes, in this adulthood, kind of 20 to 60 time. But there are younger than that and older than that also involved. So we used to think of drug use as sort of a young person's thing and that people would age out of that. That is not, that's not true. We're seeing more and more people who are at retirement age, let's say, but they're still using their drugs of choice. As far as gender distribution, it is predominantly male. That's what we see. That is pretty typical for the medical examiner population generally for all kinds of deaths. So it doesn't necessarily mean that only men are using drugs, but the predominant, predominantly overdose deaths are male. And then you can see in the lower graph here, the housing status. So the majority of people, more than about 53%, or just over 53%, are in the housed population. The remainder are unhoused. As far as housing, this graph on the left here gives you some information. We don't have the 2024 data cleaned up yet, but I don't expect that the trends will change significantly. You can see that over the last several years, generally, people are overdosing in a home or in an apartment. And if not in a home or apartment, a hotel or motel, or in a residential facility of some kind. What's not on this graph is people overdosing in their workplace. We see that not uncommonly, actually, that people are employed and overdosing, using substances at work and overdosing sometimes. And then as far as other circumstances, you can see some other just sort of characteristics of people who have experienced a fatal overdose in the last several years. And the big thing here is a history, a known history of drug misuse and a recent return to opioid use, either because they've been incarcerated or they've been in treatment or something. So they're coming out of that, going back to using, and then at that point are more vulnerable to overdosing because they've lost their tolerance potentially to especially the opioid drugs. Again, a relatively low number experiencing homelessness. And then something of interest, as we were talking about, or the sheriff was talking about this morning, related to Narcan calls, that there are a number of people, not insignificant number of people, have evidence of rapid overdose, meaning at the death scene, they still have the drug paraphernalia in their hands. They just have collapsed that quickly. And that this small number of them, or about 10% of them, don't have a pulse upon emergency medical services arrival because they have overdosed that quickly. So we've lost that opportunity to intervene through emergency medical services. But I think interesting to note that in about 60% of cases, there is someone else present. There is a bystander present. So if those people have Narcan available and are able to use it, that's a potential point at which we could prevent some of these deaths. Other potential opportunities for intervention, so the people have a current history of use or a known recent overdose, or they were recently, again, released from an institutional setting, a jail or a treatment facility. So those are points at which they're intersecting with our systems, and someone could potentially intervene there. And then also of note, in a lot of cases, there is not Narcan at the scene. And where, when it is present, it is used. So a kind of another testimony to the utility of having Narcan available. And then lastly, I just wanted to show a map of where our fatal overdoses are coming from. This is, the darker area in the center is the downtown core. I just have a little pull-out here of the actual zip codes because they didn't fit onto the map. But you can see that there are overdoses occurring everywhere, but the majority of them are sort of clustered in that downtown area. You may notice some discrepancy between the number of deaths, and this is actually the number of overdoses, where the overdose occurred. But more people may overdose outside of the region, and then they're airlifted to Sacred Heart. For example, they're transported to a local hospital for a higher level of care. And when those people die, they do fall under our jurisdiction. So the numbers for actual deaths in the county will be higher than than the number of overdoses occurring in the county. We collect data on where the injury happened and also where the death happened. So that's all I have as far as data. It was a quick, I know I talk fast, too. That was a quick overview of what's happening. I don't know if anyone has any questions for me. Yes?
Thank you. I guess, yeah, what you kind of ended on is sort of my follow-up because it looks like there's a, sort of a difference between the medical examiner's report and what the health district is reporting. So the health district, when you look at the dashboard, which is wonderful, I really appreciate that. That's an amazing resource. But are those talking to each other, or is that the difference? In that the deaths that you're seeing with the higher amount for Spokane County for the medical examiner's office are people who are coming to Sacred Heart and Spokane?
Yes. So I'm not entirely sure if the health district is only looking at deaths of people who are from Spokane County, but that may account for some of it. Some of it is also that we have the primary data. We enter that data into the death certification system, and the health district extracts it then from the, from the death certification system. So there is some lag. And there's also, because the death certificate data gets encoded and they are using the codes, it sort of depends that, on that middle piece of how the coding is occurring as to how it gets spit out at the other end in terms of if it's counted as an overdose or a heart-related death or a lung-related death or something else.
Thank you.
I have to comment on the unhoused versus housed deaths of overdose. I don't think it's prevalent, we know that, you know, really it happened in housed situations more than unhoused. And I think that goes against the narrative out there that it's just homeless people that are dying on the streets, but there are people who are living in, with doors that are also overdosing. So we don't really never hear that narrative in the community.
Yes, I think that's absolutely true. And I think, you know, people see unhoused that are using drugs because they're out in the open, right? But what they don't see is that actually more people are using drugs in their cars and their workplaces and their homes. Yes, I mean, amongst the housed, unhoused population, the majority of those deaths are overdose deaths. But it's, you can't, it's not, the other is not true, that out of the overdose deaths, yes, relatively fewer of them are in the unhoused population.
Yeah, on that, I was literally just texting my assistant to make a request for some additional information on that because based on the fire data that we've recently been presented, it appears it's much different in the city of Spokane versus the rest of the county. And I think with the countywide numbers, it probably is very different because some of those jurisdictions don't quite have the same population of those experiencing homelessness as we do in the city. And so I think that there's probably some, you know, some things that we can draw from that in terms of how it's impacting the homeless versus those who are housed.
Any other questions? Well, again, thank you so much. Nice to meet you.
Yes, thank you. Nice to meet you.
Good morning, commissioners and council, mayor. We're going to tag team this one, and I apologize in advance, we don't have a wonderful PowerPoint. We got a lot of data and information available, sometimes in reams. So I'm going to do my best to provide that, and for the sake of brevity, for those that know me, it's probably better that I don't have that. So we'll stick to the higher-level view and then have questions. So I think it's good to probably do a level set on the opiate settlement funds and what the opioid abatement council is. They're two separate things, so we'll talk a little about that background, then we'll give some data and kind of what we're seeing here and the trends in city and county. And then we'll talk a little bit about our specific investments and work that's being gone on in the community. Then we'll talk about our joint partnerships that we're working on, and then we'll look at future plans and then, of course, open it to questions. So I don't think it's a secret that there has been an opioid epidemic nationally. It's been impacting us way before 2019. But about that time is when the national litigation began to hit full steam, and you start to see states come on board and join sort of that joint litigation. Washington State was one of those, and they received a lump sum from those. As of now, that payout from that litigation nationally are, some are actualized now, some are in process, and some are the result of bankruptcy, still ongoing. So that process, although it began in 2019, we began seeing the money in 2020, it's still ongoing. We don't expect that those will end until the next couple of years, especially as we hit bankruptcies and see what the result of those are. So as Washington State was a signatory of one of those, we, Washington State, on behalf of the counties, also had a One Washington MOU that outlined the distribution of funds received by Spokane County, which resulted in fifty percent to the state of Washington. About twenty percent of that went directly to tribes and tribal organizations. So they got the largest sum of the state, and the state is then doing other projects with theirs. I think you've heard about some of that going on here in the state, but some of those being planned out as well up until 2038. And then for the counties and all of those that signed on to the One Washington MOU, they got a distribution as well. Now, the calculation of which was an internal formula, but it based on population size, use of substances and opioids, and need-for-service access requests. So that's how the distribution kind of went out. There's nine municipalities that receive funds within our area, and the city of Spokane and Spokane County were the largest recipients. I believe over the period of time up till 2038, the total distribution dollars are expected for our region somewhere near forty million dollars. Now, that's dependent upon the final determination, but forty million dollars that our region will receive. The part of the One Washington MOU that created the opioid abatement council separated some of the administrative functions of that. So essentially, how are the funds being utilized? How is that reporting? And then ultimately, is there a way for joint communication? Spokane County, along with all the municipalities in the area, initiated that conversation, and we were able to complete our, our regional agreement. So we meet, and that's actually run by our Regional Behavioral Health Administrative Service Organization. They manage and oversee that. That is strictly administrative. There are no funds assigned to it other than the administrative portions that each of the participating local governments provided and/or agreed to provide. But the majority of that is completed by the Spokane County staff. We have all of the participating local governments participate and share. We have a website that has all of the last two years' work of work for each of those and how those monies are being spent, and we're currently working on this year's to put on there. So that's the background. The current disbursement that both the city of Spokane and Spokane County has received, some have been actually, some are not, are part of, part of the discussion we're going to have today about how those joint and future prospects, again, estimations for the future because we still don't know final completion of those. For these smaller municipalities that receive the smaller lump sums, the Spokane counties' participation with those funds covers those as well. So along with their funding, we also support them in other areas. Again, part of the larger behavioral health administrative service organization work, along with healthcare authority, where we oversee six counties. That's where the distribution area. So over those six counties and every municipality in that area, Spokane County helps to support. And some of those have agreed to actually join some of our work, including the city of Spokane Valley, who is looking to partner and provide opiate funds for our long-term projects. So that's the grand overview. There's a lot of other moving parts in that, but I think that's the best summation.
Thanks, Justin. Maggie Yates, deputy city administrator. Just want to first take a moment to thank city council, mayor's office, board of county commissioners for convening this meeting, and a special thanks to Justin and his team for really being such engaged collaborators in terms of how we tackle this problem. Dr. Seeng, thank you for your robust overview of the data. We think it's just worth restating, it's sort of the pressing challenge that we're facing as a region right now. Our fire department in 2024 saw an increase of thirty percent for overdose-related calls. Obviously, Spokane is outpacing the state average, and our state outpaces the national average in terms of overdose deaths. So it really remains an acute and, and real issue for people in our community. We have folks in the room who've lost loved ones, folks in the room who've been impacted directly or indirectly. So as council president said, this is a real pressing issue for us. And there's also been, several years ago, an estimate nationally that the opioid epidemic is costing 1.5 trillion dollars, and that was before we've even seen the uptick more recently that we've seen now. So significant costs to us locally, and that's what's really motivating us to come together as jurisdictions and see how we can leverage the finite dollars that we do have. Initially, the city of Spokane decided to invest in 2024, five hundred thousand dollars into our cares team through the Spokane Fire Department. That is the social work arm of our fire department. They respond to non-emergency calls that come in through 911 to help stabilize folks and drive down their calls, connect folks to services. Previously, that was just one clinician working with other MSW students to respond to this population of folks. And with the opioid investments through the city, we have been able to staff them up to four full-time clinicians and focus specifically on the OUD, the opioid use disorder population. And that, they just became fully staffed this month, so we're excited to see the impacts there. Additionally, you heard Chief Hall talk about our partnership with Consistent Care, and we executed a five hundred thousand dollar contract with Consistent Care for High Utilizer Initiative. Many folks know Dr. Nevin. He was a former emergency room doctor who now leads Consistent Care. And he wraps around intensive case management for individuals that bounce between the legal system, shelter systems, emergency departments to, again, help stabilize them and prevent this sort of cyclical costly process that really doesn't get anybody better. And then we also have a pilot program to embed a provider with our homeless outreach team. So code enforcement and law enforcement were previously going out to encampments to help move people out of the area when they were camping illegally. And now we finally have a provider onboard who goes out with them to actually navigate people into services. So we're not just moving folks from place to place, but when there are folks who are struggling with opioid use disorder or at risk of struggling with that, we can actually navigate them into services and really stabilize. Justin's going to talk about the county's investments, and then we'll, we'll talk about the proposed joint investments that we've brought forward.
Excellent. And so I don't forget, it's Botvin Life Skills. That was the nationally recognized evidence-based practice education. And we have made those available to the school districts, NOSBI. It's up to their choice, but it costs money, and that's, I think, the biggest challenge, especially in the current budget shortfall. So some of the investments, when we took a look at this in 2022, well, 2021, when we said, what is the best use for opioid funds? The board of county commissioners tasked us with identifying what can we do to serve the community, both now and in the future, but also recognizing it's a limited source of funds for a period of time, and also there's uncertainty about how much we receive. So if we're going to do anything, can we do it well? And also make sure that we're not doing it so that in two years we have to cut a program and the people lose services. So we had that mission to go out and identify that. We took public comment. We had experts. We utilized existing panels, both with the regional opioid task force, the fentanyl roundtable, and various groups that already have been operating, get information, bring it onboard. And then we also met with people with lived experience and different groups in the community impacted, but also recognizing unique experience. So with all of that information, we encapsulated that and then looked at how can we best leverage the existing services that the BHASO does in concert with the state of Washington. The BHASO oversees behavioral services for six counties. We put out thirty-five million dollars to the region, primarily on crisis services and inpatient services. That's some of our biggest costs. So anyone here receives commercial insurance. If you were unfortunately to be detained against your will by one of our team members who we run in six counties, we would most likely be the payer for you in an inpatient setting while you're under detention. So that cost is exorbitant. And so we had to manage that within that, but how can we work so that we would support that without putting ourselves in a position where we couldn't have funding available? And especially now as we hit this unique economic climate. So with all of that, we had some key areas. Gaps in the system that are not being currently covered or not funded by existing insurance, areas that we could enhance that aren't exist, so we expanded out existing services, but it did so that hit this key group. And then third, did so with the recognition in the funds being added in 2038 that there was a succession or sustainability plan with built-in so that if there was a handoff of the funds, that that entity could continue providing that service without loss to the community. So in that area, we identified one internally for data tracking. We needed to identify. That's with the sheriff's department. What are the trends? We can best respond. We do collect a lot of data as part of the crisis system, but there's a lot of data we weren't catching. How many people were diverted that never involved in crisis system that law enforcement engaged in? So that was one of the areas that we invested funds. About two hundred thousand dollars in that annually as we move forward to 2038. Another area was expanding out immediate treatment. That was one of the key areas that the community identified. That was an investment, not only shoring up existing buildings, facilities to provide key care in our community. STARS, Spokane Treatment and Recovery Services provides withdrawal management inpatient care. They were at the point of potentially losing the building because they were in an agreement for rental. The buyer, the owner of that was looking to transition. Commerce had already appropriated money to buy it, but not enough to complete it. So by joining a partnership with Commerce and with the city and with the county, we were able to complete that partnership and maintain a service. Otherwise, we wouldn't have had that. The other aspect was immediate sobering and triage. We recognize there isn't an immediate place, other than the ER or the street, where individuals withdraw. And street is not healthy nor is it safe or beneficial to the community. And the ER uses unnecessary resources if the individual could be better served in a lower-acuity, non-intrusive area. Being in a hallway while you're waiting for a room because it's just overwhelmed was not conducive. So we immediately expanded services there. And since its inception in December, when we put that in place, we've seen almost three hundred and fifty people, of which it's a twenty-three hour and fifty-nine minute service. Eighty percent of those have been referred into a longer-term care. So instead of twenty-three hours, we just extended three hundred and fifty engagement, unique individuals over the course of the four months that it's been in place, up to seven and fifteen days. That's amazing. We were able to get them off of the street, get them into care, and then connect it. As part of that, we have integrated same-day appointments for medication-assisted treatment. That's a joint partnership with MultiCare. So we've embedded comprehensive care throughout our system for that immediate care. Additional funds went out to shore up access to the stabilization facility to allow for those that aren't covered by insurance to utilize beds that may not be fully realized. If there's an empty bed, why don't we fill it? Don't let insurance be a limitation. So we expanded access. That's immediate service. And then the long term was, what can we do in five years? We're not in the same place saying we need a resource. So at the direction of the board, we began exploring a crisis relief and sobering center. It's a new facility created by the state of Washington to allow for walk-ins and law enforcement. The key component there is, you can't be deferred away, and it does not matter what you're experiencing or what substance you're using, you'll be accepted, and then you'll receive care. We lose a lot of individuals when they're brought into the ER, and then they're sent over to a facility. By having them walked from the same campus, twenty feet into the next building, we don't lose that individual, and with the success rate we're seeing with STARS, we hope to also achieve the same thing. Not that individuals are treated once and then treated. We're able to have them up to fifteen and even thirty days if residential treatment. So that was phase one. Phase two looks at how can we partner and expand that service? We'll talk a little bit about what that joint partnership looks like. And then also looking at housing, therapeutic housing and transition services for women and children impacted by opioids and substance use. Returning from the hospital into a unsafe or unstable environment was not something that we found beneficial, and the outcomes for care were not great. By helping to purchase those through a partnership with Matty's Place, not only do they receive care, but have a longer term for greater success. So those were long-term projections for how can we best serve the community and key areas that weren't being funded. Now I'll turn it over to Maggie for the city-specific ones.
So while the county was developing their phased approach, we were conducting a sequential intercept mapping exercise, which looks at the interface of the behavioral health systems and the legal systems to understand what our current state looks like and then use that to identify what our gaps are in the city and what are our opportunities to invest in solutions. And so doing that analysis, we identified some services that we don't have that we need to create, and then also some services that we do have but aren't at a scale that can really address the demand or the need. And so we sort of came together and started looking at where we might align these visions and these different plans and how we can leverage, again, these resources that are limited, that are finite, and how can we create sort of a trajectory into a sustainable solution? And a couple of key priorities that emerged that Justin will speak to in detail were medicated assisted treatment and sobering beds. And those were identified by the city's sequential intercept map exercise, both with our internal city official team and then also with, with about thirty providers that also workshopped the map as well. So Justin and, and the city came up with a couple of ways that we could expand capacity in those two areas specifically, and he'll speak to those.
Yeah, so during this whole time that we're discussing phased approaches and working the community, Maggie and I have been meeting regularly because we recognize the need that if we're addressing a regional problem, how can we best utilize our funds for the service? And then also, there's a recognition with even the community that we're achieving a senior goal, to address epidemic that is impacting our region, that we all feel the effects. So two of those key areas that Spokane County has historically funded and that we look to expand, mat treatment, and not just for opioid use disorder, but all aspects of the individual psychiatric and substance use-related functioning. So what are the areas that are of need, and how can we best incorporate that moving forward, but get them into a recovery program that is already contracted with insurance so that the moment they're in, funding then shifts to Medicaid or their commercial and not on us? So it's about getting them in the door so that they can be connected. One of those was through a continued partnership that we have with the Regional Health District and their treatment services. So we talked about, how can we expand that? So one of the key areas, and this is something that they've shared, is they have time limits on when they can do walk-ins because of scheduled appointments, taking precedence due to limited staffing and availability of resources. So we said, why couldn't we expand that, allow for more walk-ins, and then get connected? That's where we're seeing benefit at Stars. So we're in ongoing discussions with them, and we'll have more conversations with the Health District Board as well to say, how can we best partner? So that's one area where the city and the county are saying, if we can both join and put our money together, we jointly can maximize the return we get from the service, and not only that, have a better, more successful outcome potential for SRHD. And it also just looks good too, when we're holding hands and rubbing elbows. The second aspect is Stars. We found success that is capable there with getting them into service immediately, and that's just with six beds. So expanding out those beds and increasing that access, again, demonstrates our ability to connect individuals, get them off the street, and then also have a greater outcome so we have diversion from any sort of jail or other incarcerated event, from unnecessary hospitalizations, or unnecessary crisis system, and really unnecessary engagements with the public where the individual is just, and the community is not better served. So those are areas where we felt, providing that immediately, and we haven't even publicized the Stars thing really, and it's how it's being utilized. So with the partnership that the city already has with Stars, providing CAR-50 and with fire, that further is able to maximize, again, our partnership to be able to look at better serving the community. You want to touch on those two real quick?
Yeah, the only other piece I would add is that we're also exploring how we can partner with SRHD to serve as a drop-off point to for first responders. So if law enforcement or fire comes into contact with someone who could really benefit from enrollment into treatment, they can take folks to SRHD's clinic instead of taking them to the emergency department or to the jail. So that will serve as a real savings in terms of time and resources for our first responders.
And really putting it under the umbrella of the existing services that ASO already has, it's a comprehensive engagement. So it's not just one, they're shifted over here, and they have follow-up. Once they're in the door, we find that they're connected across the spectrum, so that whole no wrong door approach, it's one entry, one continuation. With the hub-and-spoke model, with BHT, they have navigators at Stars that gets them connected to not only mat treatment, but also into insurance, again, looking at long-term viability of programming. And then also saying that if SRHD is not available because they're overbooked or it's after hours, can they go to Stars, receive a 23-hour service and go back and receive a service at SRHD? And so that really what we see is two, or 24-hour, 48-hour period where they're still receiving service, but the big thing is they're not continuing to engage with law enforcement or the public in an unsafe manner. And so that's something that, again, better coordinating those efforts is where we can achieve those. And again, we're not supplanting any money that already exists, we're just enhancing the use and connection of those, which is not only physically sound, but it is really great practice for long-term viability. Do you want to start on the long term? So we've got a lot of long-term projects, and sometimes I spitball a lot of those out. So for the board, you always hear those, I apologize, you're going to have to hear this again. But we have partnerships that are in place as we look towards the future, including expanding out co-response services. Now, it's not specific to opioid use dollars, but it is as part of our mental health sales tax. We hope to finalize that with Spokane Fire and further be able to provide that level of immediate service from a first responders' aspect and incorporate that into our comprehensive continuum of care. Alongside the sheriff and SPD, we also have behavioral response units that are going out. The goal is, if fire's out there and law enforcement, can we reduce on-scene time for some where it's a more medical issue versus another, you know, safety issue, and then can we immediately transport them and not take a whole engine or vehicle out of service? So those are areas we're exploring to, again, maximize resources here locally by also accessing available ones that the state provides. The second area that we're looking to really expand as we look towards opioid is our crisis relief and sobering center. This long-term project is what we're saying, needs to meet the need within five years, but then 15 years beyond. The common theme we find is that there are no places to take people immediately when they determine the need for recovery, is that if you have a family and they say, I want to receive care now, you got to call a place, you got to hope that they receive them, they have to do an assessment, and then you may have to wait two weeks. We wanted to remove that barrier entirely and say, is there a place that anyone can go? Walk-in, law enforcement drop-off, first responder, receive care regardless of what they're experiencing, again, without the impact of severe medical or other comorbidities, so that they can receive that and then transition into that. The Crisis Relief Center provides that immediately, and it also provides additional sobering beds. So the individuals who oftentimes are interacting with the community, who are currently under the influence, aren't always readily available to speak or engage for identifying their need for treatment. So providing them a bed so that they have the opportunity in a safe place, and then be able to talk to a peer or other behavioral professional, can then get them into a crisis bed, and then into the relief center, again, reduces the overall impact that we might have to say, go to the ER, take up a bed, and they don't have a potentiality of making it back again. The other aspect of this is, we want to co-locate the potentiality of medical services and mat treatment onsite. We recognize that when people are coming out of either the jail or coming out of the hospital, continuation or confusion regarding the need for medication may be present, is there a safe place to go and receive that care? Co-locating that on the same site with this overall recovery center not only benefits the individual, but further gives a resource to first responders' community to say, it's a one-stop shopping for a lot of areas. All right? I know, it's a lot of great news. That's my hope, I'm idealist in that way. How it functionally plays out is something we're doing, and that's a partnership we've already made with talking with the city, planning on what we would do into a long-term plan, intermediate, and to the future. We've been working with the state ask to look at their funding for capital projects, and the board has been amazing in asking for the state and advocating for that. That looks like a very real possibility, and we also have a federal ask. Again, the board supporting this request to say, can we look at a national, state, and local investment? And with the support of the city of Spokane Valley, it really is becoming a regional approach like the Spokane Regional Stabilization Center was. So not only do we expand that level of care, but we have a regional approach that the whole community stands behind. Again, I'm an idealist, I think that it'll be wonderful, and how this plays out really depends upon how we all come together. And I'll turn it over to Maggie for any other point she wants to make.
I don't think Justin is an idealist, I think it's very much within our grasp. Just this week at a city event, I came into contact with someone who was unhoused, struggling with alcoholism, and had some legal involvement, and I was able to call up Consistent Care, who we have our high-utilizer contract with, supported by our opioid dollars. They connected with this individual, got him a bed into the Spokane County's Crisis Stabilization Center, and he was admitted for treatment. So this is just one example of how we can leverage our city and county resources to actually build out a system. Now, we were very fortunate that a bed was available because we know that too often, folks and our providers and our community members are having similar interactions, and they don't know who to call, and if they do, there's not a bed available. But this week, it worked, and it really proved that the system we are building out is going to be effective and much needed in the region. So we'll stop there. If there are any questions, we know we're running out of time.
How many beds are you talking about, the sobering unit, as you look at that?
In conjunction with Stars, we're looking at the potentially building out to up to 24. They use recliners, the state language does, and beds. So it's up to 24 with the possibility of shifting where the need exists, more maybe sobering, more recliner, and then in addition, the 12 beds at Stars. Currently, the Stars beds, the six sobering beds we have there are the only ones that exist in eastern Washington. So that's an important thing to note. There are also no secure withdrawal management beds in all of eastern Washington. That closed when Parkside closed. And we also have the only two stabilization centers in Washington, which are really the stabilization center here in Spokane, and then one up that we currently cover beds up in the north. But otherwise, we do not have available resources. We've seen five close. So we talk about beds, five specific beds, there are more other types of beds like withdrawal management.
Well, I just wanted to thank you both for helping us get aligned on our state and federal asks, because I think having the city and the county together on that makes us more impactful in both Olympia and Washington DC. So thank you very much for that.
Well, I just want to thank the board for the opioid investments that have been made so far. We've all been working really well together on that, including with some of the Stars investments. I personally just wanted to share, I enjoyed visiting the Stars facility a week or two ago, and you can really see the triage, the sobering, and then the withdrawal management, which is just upstairs. So you have kind of these three steps of treatment all in one location. There's then connections to further treatment, including some transportation pieces, which is important for not losing people right through that program. And so I just wanted to ask Justin, is there, are there going to be opportunities for other electeds to have a chance to look at that facility if they want to? I know it can cause a little bit of a disruption there. And then lastly, I'll just say thank you guys for the proposal on the partnership piece. Thanks to the mayor and council president for endorsing that. I think that that idea of making some co-investments to build out this system is a really great opportunity for the citizens to see us working together.
Yes. Maggie and I were just talking about this, ensuring that the council and the mayor has the opportunity to be able to visit. We do recognize that it's a treatment center, so we, having it in advance and planning that, so we don't disrupt that, is a key element, but of course, they stand ready. It's under renovation, and we're completing that commerce purchase, so you'll see that there are still things there from the original Daybreak facility that they've taken over. All of it's projected to be updated here in the next year.
And just one more observation, if I could, from that visit. The sheriff's office was there as well, which I think was really great to have that connection between law enforcement and the treatment program, and they were exchanging phone numbers, talking about what the drop-off time would look like. Sounds like it would be really quick and efficient, so I'm glad to see that piece be part of this partnership.
Well, thank you. We all know our citizens do not look for services based on the boundaries of the city they live in. They're in Spokane, they're in the valley, they're in airway heights, they're in Medical Lake, they are in the county, they are our citizens, and we need to really partner. I really appreciate the partnership going forward. It's a new day for the city and the county to really be coming together to meet the needs and to build capacity, so I'm excited as we go forward. Is there anything else before we let the council member, uh, council member, former council member Waldorf?
No, Commissioner, council member. So the proposal, just to, in a nutshell, would be to invest further in Stars so that there'd be more of these sobering beds right, right away, in the short term, like within this year? And then the other longer-term proposal is to build out this whole sobering center expansion to the Crisis Stabilization Center. Is that, and that would take, I know that at the county, we're looking at the building, doing the review of how we would fit that facility onto the campus. So is that, do you think they would be able to put beds in or chairs by the end of this year? What's the timeline?
Yeah, part of the conversation that Maggie and I have been having, recognizing the need part, we've already prepared Stars for the possibility of scale-up, and that was part of the whole conversation, we built that with scalability. So we want to be able to add those, and that could be done as soon as a contract change is made. They could add more beds, and we could expand out a facility. That part is easier at Stars. Now, the relief center is going to be a two-year project. We're already under design, build, and development, so that part's exciting, with a tentative date sometime in the spring of 2027. I hesitate to give anything more than that because we don't know yet, but so between now and then, the goal is to run those with the city's partnership and our existing contract with them until the beds are open in the Crisis Relief Center, and then titrate them back down to the six-bed. And so run those simultaneously, again, scale up as needed. But that way, there isn't a continued use of funds at the high level, but we scale to meet the need. Planning that in in advance is how we're trying to do for viability of both programs.
Great. Well, again, the hour is getting long. I just want to thank everybody who came and presented. Thank you to our community members who shared this time with us. I also want to give a shout-out to Jacobi Bird and Brendan Nelson, and to the Health District for hosting us today as we go forward. Commissioner Cooney and I have already talked about, we have some regional issues, and this will not be the last time that we sit together and try to work through the challenges that face us in our community. So with that being said, thank you again, and I'm going to ask all, take my glasses off, I'll ask everyone that have joined us to exit the room except for our council members and our commissioners. And at that point, I'll have Matt Folsom come on up, lead us into a session.
And Matt, he is our chief civil deputy attorney for prosecuting attorney for the county commissioners, and so he's going to explain the reason for going into executive session.
Yes, absolutely. So everyone can stay for this part, this is all part of the open public meeting. So the joint session, we have an executive session today, and this, the purpose is pending and potential litigation under RCW 423110. The people I would like present are the board of county commissioners, Spokane City Council, legal counsel for both, Matthew Folsom, Devin Curta, Mike Piccolo, Elizabeth Shodel, the mayor of the city Spokane, Spokane County staff Scott Simmons, city staff Marlene Feist, and Alex Scott. The time estimated is about 30 minutes. It is 12:10 right now, is that correct?
12:12.
12:12. So if it's the will of the board, we will break into executive session now and be finished at 11:42, when this joint session will adjourn.
Maybe 1:42, or no, 12:42.
I had it right, 12:42?
You said 11, it's okay. And are there any decisions expected to be made?
No final actions.
So at the end of the executive session, then we'll be adjourning the meeting at that point in time.
Yes.
Thank you.